Thank you again for joining us for this virtual public hearing. I'm Liz Jordan, the VDOT project manager for this project, which is Route 658 Rockland Road grade separated project in Warren County. We are very excited about this project and are eager to share it with you. Here is the agenda for this public hearing. After explaining the purposes of it and a public comment process, I will introduce representatives of the VDOT project team. I will then provide you with an overview of the project, highlighting some of its key elements. Although a seemingly small project, it is big in concept and design. So we've put together a short video that should help you to visualize what we are proposing to do. At the conclusion of the video, we will open the floor for your questions and remarks. The public hearing is a key milestone in VDOT's project development process. Its purpose is to: One, inform the public of the project's status and present current design recommendations. Two, describe the project so that the public can determine how they might be affected by it. Three, provide the public with an opportunity to comment. And four, create an administrative record of public participation. In short, the public hearing provides the public, especially affected property owners, with an opportunity to view the current project design and provide meaningful feedback relative to it at a time in the project development when the design is still flexible. Given the unique circumstances of COVID-19, along with our commitment to protecting public health during this global pandemic, VDOT is conducting this design public hearing virtually to avoid in-person contact. This virtual public hearing provides the same information and opportunities as an in-person public hearing, including an overview of the project and its proposed design, cost, and schedule. You will also have access to our project team and be afforded ample time to ask questions and provide feedback. We are happy to address any concerns you might have and are eager to hear your thoughts about this project. Please note that these discussions will not be part of the official record. The ways in which you can formally submit your comments on the project are described in the next slide. Here are the ways in which you may formally submit your comments to VDOT. Please note that I will be repeating this information through the public hearing, so you don't need to rush to write it down all right now. To submit your comments, you may leave a voicemail on our dedicated line at (540) 332-7848. Email me, ElizabethJordan@Elizabeth.Jordan@VDOT.Virginia.gov, or you can mail them to my attention at VDOT 811 Commerce Road, Stanton, Virginia 24401. In all cases, please reference the subject "Public Hearing: Rockland Road Bridge Comment." You may also use the survey form available on VDOT's Public Involvement page for this project. More details about that will be presented in the next slide. Again, please note that verbal and written comments received at this public hearing are not considered part of the official record. In order for your comments to be incorporated into the official record, you must call, email, or mail your comments to VDOT, or use the project survey form on the website. Importantly, comments must be received or postmarked within 10 days after the public hearing to be considered part of the official record. That means that all comments must be received or postmarked by Thursday, July 1st. This is a screenshot of VDOT's Public Involvement page for this project. This is where you will find project information, as well as this presentation and the video that we will be sharing later. You will also find links to two surveys, one through which you can provide official comments and the other, a Title VI demographic survey. Both are entirely voluntary. If you would like to complete these surveys, just click the Comments header in the blue box and the page will scroll down to the bottom where the surveys can be found. Here are some representatives of VDOT project team who are available to you this afternoon. Although I'm only featuring a handful of us on this slide, please know that there are numerous others attending this hearing virtually at the ready to address your questions, remarks, and concerns. Again, I'm Liz Jordan, serving in the capacity of project manager. My official title is Environmental Specialist, and I will also be answering any questions you might have relative to the environmental work that was done in support of this project. Also in attendance, we have Scott Alexander, Assistant Location and Design Engineer here in the Stanton District; Jason Henry, the Design Team Lead and Roadway Engineer from VDOT Central Office; We are also joined by Shannon Kerrigan, Hydraulics Engineer, VDOT Central Office; Amde Aspa, Bridge Engineer, Stanton District; and finally Brently Bowles, VDOT's Regional Representative for Right-of-Way. He has extensive knowledge of our processes and procedures and is available, like the rest of our team, to answer any questions you might have. If you are joining us via the Internet, you are welcome to type your questions or remarks directly into the Participants box on the right-hand side of your screen. If prompted, please direct your questions or remarks to all co-hosts. If you are joining us by phone, then please dial *3 to raise your hand. You will be put into the Q&amp;A queue and muted until it is your time to speak. Sandy Myers, Communications Director for the Stanton District, will read your question or remarks, and I will respond accordingly and direct to the appropriate VDOT team member as necessary. If we are unable to fully address your concerns this afternoon, then please submit them to us using the phone line, email, mail, or online survey form. You will be able to enter your questions into the Participants box after the presentation of the video. So now we're going to move on to the project overview. VDOT proposes to construct a grade-separated crossing on Route 658, which is Rockland Road in Warren County, near Front Royal and the Virginia Inland Port. The project is located along Route 658 near its intersection with Route 705, which is Fishnet Boulevard. When complete, this bridge will allow the traveling public to pass over the Norfolk Southern Railway unimpeded. This project is a high priority for Warren County and is funded in part by a bill grant awarded to the Virginia Port Authority by the United States Department of Transportation. Before we move on to the next slides, I want to point out some things here to help you orient yourself. Right here is Route 658. This is Rockland Road. These are the railroad tracks, Norfolk Southern Railway. Here's Fishnet Boulevard, which is Route 705. This is the entrance to the Rockland Recreational Park. This is Rockland Recreational Park here. Up here, we have the Virginia Hills Church. This is Kelly Drive, and these are the western limits of the project. And over here, we have the eastern limits of the project. Here is an aerial overview of the proposed plans. The grade separation would consist of a bridge 220 feet long and 42 feet wide with a minimum vertical clearance of 23 feet. This bridge would be tall enough for double-stack freight containers to pass underneath, allowing traffic to flow freely while trains pass through the corridor or unload at the Virginia Inland Port and other local businesses. In the existing condition, vehicles are stopped here multiple times per day for indefinite periods of time. In 2019, Route 658 had an average daily traffic count of 2,200 vehicles per day. And by the design year of 2046, the estimated average daily traffic volume would be 5,990 vehicles per day. By providing a grade-separated crossing over the railroad tracks, the project would eliminate the wait time for these vehicles, thereby greatly improving the reliability of this route. Since the bridge would be long enough to accommodate three tracks, the project could also accommodate future rail needs. In addition to the construction of the bridge, improvements are planned for the roadway approaches on Route 658, as well as Route 705. These are described in more detail in the following slides. But before I move on, I'd just like to point out the differences between the existing and proposed conditions. Right near what you're looking at is, again, Route 658, which is Rockland Road. Over here is the existing alignment of Fishnet Boulevard. Here's the driveway to the Virginia Hills Church. The railroad tracks are right through here. We've also got an access road to the Allegheny Power Station through here. And then all that you see over top here are our proposed plans, what we're proposing to do with the project. I'm going to just describe that a little bit more in detail in the following slide. This detail shows key project elements along Route 658. As shown here, Route 658 would be shifted slightly north of its existing alignment to accommodate the bridge and improve site distance. The proposed bridge would be 220 feet long and 42 feet wide, spanning two existing Norfolk Southern Railroad tracks, leaving room for a future third track. The typical section would consist of two 12-foot lanes and two 8-foot paved shoulders. It would be a three-span structure with one abutment on either side of the Norfolk Southern right-of-way and with two solid wall piers constructed on rock or supported by steel piles located within it. The superstructure would be made of continuous steel plate girders with a composite reinforced concrete deck. It would be jointless to enhance its service life with minimal future maintenance costs. The project also includes a right-turn lane into Rockland Recreational Park. The entrances to Rockland Recreational Park and the Virginia Hills Church would be relocated to the east of their current locations. An improved entrance and access road would be provided to the natural gas facility. And two water quantity basins would be constructed for the project. This detail shows key project elements in the vicinity of Route 705. As shown here, the alignment of Route 705 and the entrance of Rockland Recreational Park would be shifted to the east away from the railroad tracks to accommodate a right-turn lane into the park. Here, Route 705 would be built up substantially to accommodate the grade change required by the bridge on Route 658 at its intersection with Route 705. With its intersection with Route 658, this could be as much as 16 feet of fill. The Allegheny Power Service Road would be realigned with its entrance off of Fishnet, the relocated Fishnet Boulevard, rather than Rockland Road or Route 658. The entrance to the Virginia Hills Church would be shifted. There's the existing, and here's the proposed. And its driveway would be realigned. The existing gravel parking lot in Rockland Road, which is here, Rockland Recreational Park here, that will be impacted by the relocation of Fishnet would be replaced in kind. That's down over here. And all affected private entrances would be replaced in kind. Here are the typical sections for Route 658, Route 705, the church entrance, and the Allegheny Power Service Road. The typical section for Route 658 would consist of two 12-foot lanes with an 8-foot shoulder on either side of the road, four feet of which is paved. There would be guard rail. The typical section for Route 705 would consist of two 12-foot lanes with an 8-foot shoulder on either side of the road, of which four feet would be paved and four feet would be grass. The typical section for the church entrance would consist of a single 8-foot lane with a 2-foot shoulder and a ditch on either side. And the typical section for the Allegheny Power Service Road would consist of two 12-foot lanes with a 2-foot grass shoulder on either side. It is important to note that the 8-foot paved shoulder on the bridge and the 4-foot paved shoulder on Route 658 could accommodate bikes and pedestrians in this rural context. Due to its scope and complicated phasing, the project requires a detour. During Phase 1 of construction, vehicles would be directed to the west of Route 705 via Detour A, and during Phase 3 of construction, to the east of Route 705 via Detour B. Through residential, church and park traffic would utilize either detours, and in some cases, both, during Phase 2 of construction. The detour routes are shown here and will be explained more fully in the video. Rockland Recreational Park would remain open for the duration of construction, and all affected owners, including local churches, would retain access to their property at all times. There would be approximately five acres of fee simple right-of-way, approximately 5,290 square feet of permanent easement, and approximately two acres of temporary construction easement required for this project. Please note that additional easements may be needed for drainage and utilities, so these numbers may change as we progress through project development. There would be no residential, commercial, businesses, or nonprofit displacements associated with this project. And all right-of-way acquisitions would be completed by VDOT in accordance with the Uniform Act and federal and state laws. VDOT policies and procedures would be followed for all appraisals and negotiations. Each affected property would be subject to evaluation to determine its fair market value. And during negotiations, the landowner would receive a copy of the acquisition valuation, a title examination, and a bona fide offer in writing, along with all pertinent construction plan sheets. The VDOT negotiator would communicate with the property owner to ensure all questions, comments, and concerns are addressed during this process. In accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act, a categorical exclusion was prepared for this project on the behalf of the Federal Highway Administration. The environmental work conducted in support of the NEPA document included, but was not limited to, cultural resources, natural resources, hazardous materials, environmental justice, and noise. Archaeological and architectural surveys were conducted within the project study area. No archaeological sites were identified, and none of the seven architectural resources located in the area of potential effects were eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. On March 4th, 2020, the Virginia Department of Historic Resources determined that the proposed project would have no effect on historic properties. In order to construct the project as proposed, Fishnet Boulevard would be relocated, requiring the use of 1.522 acres of the 219-acre Rockland Recreational Park. On July 2nd, 2020, after the official jurisdiction over the park concurred, federal highways made a de minimis impact finding for this use. Because the relocation of Fishnet Boulevard would significantly alter the horizontal alignment and halve the distance to noise-sensitive land uses, a screening-level noise analysis was conducted. It was concluded that noise impacts are not predicted in this project corridor and that noise mitigation is not warranted. Extensive coordination was done with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the Department of Wildlife Resources for compliance with Section 7 of the Endangered Species Act and to ensure that the project would not adversely affect the Madison Cave isopod, a listed federally threatened species which lives in the sinkholes in the project vicinity. VDOT has designed the project to avoid impacts to the species and its habitat. No streams or wetlands are present in the project area, and as such, no federal water quality permits would be required to construct this project. This project is fully funded for the preliminary engineering, right-of-way, and construction phases. The total project cost estimate is approximately $27.4 million. This includes $1,940,393 for preliminary engineering, $3,491,606 for right-of-way and utilities, and $21,939,821 for construction. Approximately $15 million of funding would be provided by the Virginia Port Authority, which was awarded a bill grant for this project by the United States Department of Transportation. This grant is administered through the National Maritime Administration. After the public hearing and once all comments are considered and addressed, the proposed design would be approved and the right-of-way phase and detailed design efforts would begin. We are looking to advertise this project for construction in the summer of 2023. The planned construction start date is December 30th, 2023, and is expected to be completed in the spring of 2025. Here again are the ways in which you can submit your comments on the project. You may leave a voicemail, mail them to me, mail them to VDOT, or use the survey form on the VDOT project website. Again, in all cases, please reference the subject "Public Hearing: Rockland Road Bridge Comment." Please remember that you must call, email, or mail your comments to VDOT or use the project survey form on the website in order for them to be incorporated into the official record. All comments must be received or postmarked by Thursday, July 1st. Well, that concludes it for the presentation. We are going to show the video now, and we'll open the floor to questions and remarks upon its conclusion. Thank you again in advance for your participation.
Every day, thousands of vehicles and train cars cross paths here on Route 658, Rockland Road in Warren County, just south of the Virginia Inland Port near Front Royal. Rockland Road drivers experience frequent and sometimes lengthy delays at the crossing as trains travel the busy Norfolk Southern Railway or perform loading and unloading operations at the inland port. The Virginia Department of Transportation plans to construct a grade-separated crossing, a bridge carrying Rockland Road traffic over the rail line. The project would improve reliability and traffic flow on Rockland Road, which already carries 2,200 vehicles a day and is projected to reach nearly 6,000 by the design year 2046. Freight rail traffic is also expected to increase. The proposed bridge would be long enough to span the two existing tracks and accommodate a third one in the future. The proposed structure, shown in these conceptual designs, would be 220 feet long and 42 feet wide. The bridge would have a minimum vertical clearance of 23 feet to allow double-stacked freight containers to pass underneath. Norfolk Southern traffic and inland port operations would no longer conflict with vehicle traffic. The project includes a realignment of Rockland Road to enhance site distance and would also make improvements to Fishnet Boulevard, Route 705. Fishnet and the entrance to Rockland Park would be shifted to the east away from the railroad tracks, allowing construction of a right-turn lane into the park. The new park entrance would be aligned with the new entrance road for Virginia Hills Church. Other features of the project include a new access road to the natural gas facility and a realigned service road for Allegheny Power. Rockland Road, including the bridge over the railway, would have paved shoulders wide enough to accommodate bikes and pedestrians. This project is designed to preserve sinkhole areas, the habitat of Madison Cave isopod protected species. Construction is scheduled to start in December 2023 and last 16 months. Rockland Road would be closed for the duration. Route 340-522 Winchester Road and Route 661 Fairground Road would serve as detour routes. Rockland Park would remain open to the public during construction. The total cost of the project is estimated at $27 million. It is partly funded by a bill grant awarded to the Virginia Port Authority by the United States Department of Transportation. If you have any questions about the proposed Rockland Road improvements, please contact VDOT's Edinburgh residency office at (540) 984-5600.
Wonderful, Michael. Thank you so much for showing that video. I think we're ready to open the lines for questions, remarks, or comments. Sandy, I'll turn it over to you to moderate that conversation, those questions.
Well, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you very much for joining us for this very important public hearing. The question and answer feature should be turned on now. Michael, just let us know if that is not the case. If you wish to make a remark or a question, please type your name into the question and answer box. We will call upon you and we will unmute you. The way it works in this particular piece of software is we will see your name. I will announce your name. I will send you a message or click on your name and ask you to unmute, and you will have to unmute yourself, and then you can proceed with your remarks. So now the question and answer box is open, and if anybody would like to make any remarks, we would love to hear from you.
It's Liz again, and I just wanted to say that we're happy to take any type of remarks. If you're in support of the project, we would happily take that as well. If you had questions, concerns, we're here for you. Got a whole bunch of folks on the line who can answer any number of questions.
And again, if you are just calling in on the phone, you can hit *3, and that will raise your hand, so we can see that. And then we can work with you to unmute at that point.
Sandy, I see a question in the box. The question is, how much of the project is funded by grant? And that's about $15 million. And that's a grant that was received by the Virginia Port Authority, via the National Maritime Administration and United States Department of Transportation. It's a federal grant.
Thank you, Liz. We saw a hand raised, and we did a request to unmute. I have not seen where that individual has unmuted their microphone, so... And again, if you're calling in and you need to unmute, you hit *6. *3, again, is to raise your hand.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. This is Larry Andes, and Dr. Jordan, thank you so much, and Annie as well. A couple of questions. I tried to sign on, by the way, and I couldn't get on through the computer, so I called in. Thanks for both those options available. I didn't hear what you said regarding the amount of acreage. I guess it's on the property that my wife and I own. Is it 1.3 acres? What did I... Can you clarify that for me, please? Because I didn't get to see the visuals either, because I'm calling in rather than with my computer. I couldn't get on.
Sure, Mr. Andes. Thank you so much for calling back, and I'm sorry we've had all these technical difficulties. We talked on Friday as well.
Right, we sure did. Thank you so much. It's okay. It's the real world.
That's right. So I sort of gave a cumulative listing of what the right-of-way and permanent easement totals would be. But based upon our current right-of-way data sheet, it looks like 29,023 square feet of your parcel, which is number six, would be currently proposed for acquisition, and that works out to be about .662 acres. Jason Henry, if you're there, you might want to affirm that, but that's what I took from the right-of-way data sheet. Did you want me to repeat that, Mr. Andes?
No, yes. I'm sorry. I was waiting for someone else to respond. No, I got that. I think you said it was .662 acres, I believe. For clarity, also, I wear two hats, as I mentioned. I'm the pastor of Fishnet Ministries Church, and so I understand that both churches will have no impediment of traffic during the construction. Is that correct?
So that is our goal, yes. And so it's somewhat a complicated project, because we're essentially building two mountains out there. So the phasing requires us to relocate, start that relocated Fishnet first, so that people can still access your property on Fishnet Boulevard. So that is the goal. And as far as I know, there should be no interruption of your ability to access your properties.
Okay, very, very good. And this, as you all, you know, and believe, this is a very much-needed project. Totally.
Well, we're very happy for your support. I think it's a great project, and it's solving a very particular transportation issue. You know, right there, it's localized. But right now, we can't get folks moving over those tracks if there's a train there, and that can come at any time and for any, you know, period of length of time. So we think it's a good...
We experience that on a regular basis, absolutely. So one final question, then, is someone from your office will make contact with us regarding details on that right-of-way. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. We've got Brently Bowles on the phone. Brently, did you want to maybe elaborate on that process a little bit?
Okay. This is Brently Bowles from the right-of-way section.
Brently, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Brently.
Yes, sir. I guess the first thing that will happen will be an appraiser will send a letter out contacting you, offering you the opportunity to meet with them when they look at the property. They'll request to come and look at the property. From there, they will write their appraisal and then turn it over to the negotiator, and the negotiator will come out and meet with you. Of course, with COVID, we've been mailing packages out, but it's informational packages with everything in it. And then you'll be contacted, and you can discuss the acquisition with them.
Okay, that's fine. And that's fine, okay. That brings clarity. And then any questions we have regarding that cut-in, we would be able to see on the property what you're proposing, then. And I can see pretty much on the map, but I didn't get to see it on the computer. Okay, that's fine. And do you have any timeframe on that projected time?
Not off the top of my head. Once the plans are approved, it will probably take several weeks to get the appraisal done. Then you'll be contacted by then. Then you'll be contacted by the negotiator.
That sounds fine. Okay. Thank you so much, Brently. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for all of your hard work on this project.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for joining us.
You're very welcome.
And again, if anybody wishes to make a comment, all you need to do is type your name into the question box. We will be happy to unmute you. And again, the process for unmuting is we will send you a request to unmute, and you will unmute yourself, and then you can orally make your remarks. If you're calling in on the phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star three, and then you can unmute by hitting star six.
Sandy, I see another question in the chat box.
Okay.
Comment. Did you want to read it?
Yeah, I'll read.
That's okay. Thanks. Sorry.
I saw a stormwater basin on the plans. Any chance of making that into a conservation project, like a large rain garden with native shrubs slash wildflowers and/or other environmentally friendly design elements?
All right. Thank you for that question. We are working with the Department of Environmental Quality to make sure that we're meeting all of our requirements from a stormwater and water quality perspective. And so we are doing what we need to in terms of the regulations. As for these other amenities, some of this is on the park property, but that really is beyond the scope of what we would do for this project. We did extensive coordination with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the Department of Wildlife Resources about preserving that habitat for the Madison Cave Isopod, which there is actually healthy, robust population living in those sinkholes. And so we have agreed, that will actually not only design the project around those sinkholes so that they won't be impacted, we won't be filling them in or anything like that, but we're going to be treating water that has not been treated before to sort of enhance that habitat. So these other issues are things that aren't part of our scope of the project currently, but perhaps something that could be worked out with Warren County as they develop the recreational park. That might be something they might be interested in. Shannon, did you have any other thoughts about this?
Yeah, Liz, I was just going to say that one of, one of the pond facilities is intended to be a bioretention, which falls into like the public's virtual perception as somewhat similar to a rain garden. I can't guarantee that it'll be like your stereotypical rain garden, and we're also limited in terms of budget and constructibility, and how much water is going through some of those. Ring, smaller rain garden plants don't survive well when there's a lot of water passing through an area. Yeah, too much flow. So we are designing with that concept in mind. General speaking for at least one of the basins.
Thank you, Shannon.
Answers the question.
So we have another question. This is from Mary Powers Ryan. Since the new proposed road is a lot wider than the existing road, how will the new road intersect with the old road?
Thank you for that question. Scott, can I kick this on over to you to answer, please? Scott Alexander.
Sorry, I was searching for the unmute button.
There you go.
Well, the road itself is wider. I guess the current road, I believe, has 11-foot lanes, and that's what the new road has. There will be paved shoulders over the bridge, so the paved shoulders will transition back to the grass shoulders that are on the current road. So technically, the travelway is not any wider. It's just that the paved shoulders make up that additional width, and, you know, can provide some refuge or some safety for the occasional pedestrian or bike user out there when traveling over the bridge. I hope that answers your question.
And she says, I think so. You were saying the existing road's lanes are 12-foot wide now, and that is a question. Correct, Scott?
Liz, can you bring up the typical section?
Michael, that would actually be slide 12, please.
Actually, if Jason is on there, I'd give him to confirm. I think, I think the, where the bridge is, the pavement transitions.
Well, Scott. Scott?
Yeah, go ahead.
Jason Henry, I'm just trying to provide a little input. As far as the lane width goes on Rockland Road itself, we're using 12-foot lanes. Existing lanes are about 11-foot, a little bit, 11-foot on the average, so it's not that much further. The other thing that we did, too, is we went ahead and provided a four-foot paved shoulder, and that's to go and revive for bicycle accommodation, and a little bit more for the grass that go behind the paved shoulders needed. Does that, does that help in terms of visualizing what the new project will look like? Mary?
Thank you, Jason. Ms. Powers, if you have a follow-up, go ahead and enter it into the box, and we'll address it. Michael, maybe now would be a time just to put up the slide about how to submit comments again, either 4 or 20.
There's, there's one more comment from Ms. Ryan.
Oh, goodness, okay.
Yes. It seems like the new road will be a big change, even though you say it's only one foot different on each side. But thanks for the answer.
Just a reminder, if you're on the phone, please hit star six to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Two other questions. The entrance of Fishnet Boulevard off of Rockland Road, looks like it's a nice wide sweep that tapers into the existing road, Fishnet Boulevard. Do you know the, will that be the extent of the improvements? What I'm seeing on this printout of the improved road tying into Fishnet Boulevard? In other words, will that go, the new improved road go into Fishnet Boulevard where the drawings are indicating? I don't know if that made sense to you. What I'm seeing is the.
Go ahead, Mr. Andrews.
I'm sorry.
Let me try to explain it better. There's a nice wide entrance sweeping in from Rockland, from Rockland Road on Fishnet Boulevard, the new entrance, and it goes past the road that will go back to the power plant. And then will that end where I'm seeing the marks where it just, where it joins the existing Fishnet Boulevard?
Would it be possible to go to the overview drawing?
Now, I can't pull my, I couldn't connect online, so I'm looking at a printout from the other day. It's kind of a little bit blurry, that print on my copier. Let me ask you this way.
I see.
The new entrance. Go ahead.
What I was going to say, sir, is that the connection that you're seeing where relocated fishnet is coming into an existing is the limit of the improvement. There's a gap between where it ends to where a new parking lot is going in for the county.
Yes, yes.
Couple hundred feet. That area will not be improved.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. That's fine. That sounds just fine. Second question is, at what point will the Warren County and Fishnet Ministries discuss the relocation of the two signs, one for Rockland Park and one for Fishnet Ministries?
Offhand, typically, whenever those signs, whenever signs are affected, usually they're discussed during the right-of-way phase. You know, perhaps I need to go and just pass this over to right-of-way for a moment to go and answer that question a little bit further.
Okay, yes, the appraisal will look at the signs and either value signs, or we'll figure something about relocating them. Again, this is a case-by-case basis, but they will be addressed in the appraisal.
So, so VDOT will contact us as well as Warren County for that discussion. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We'll definitely be contacting you about the signs.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We do have another comment. Will the results of the survey be made public?
It all becomes part of the public transcript, so, and the official records. So, Scott, please affirm, but I believe that is, is true, correct?
Yes, we will compile all of the comments, collect them all, bring them all together, and address, address the comments as needed, and review the design, and make sure the design is still in nature with the comments. In other words, if we can adjust the design to accommodate the comments, we will certainly do so, and pull it all together into a, into a package and submit it to Richmond for what we call design approval. And at that point, if, if someone provided a name or an email address, we can respond back to the people and let them know how, how the comments turned out, what were the general results of the comments, as well as how we address them. So that, that'll be all part of the design approval process. If you have a specific question or would like to actually see them, of course, you can email us and let us know. We can send it over.
And there's a follow-up question is, will the survey responses and the public comments be made public?
Yes, we consider them the same thing. The survey results that we receive are considered comments, and all of those will be pulled together for that package.
And we will note that this entire presentation is available on the project page. If you go to virginia dot org, and Virginia spelled out, and there's an orange bar at the top of the webpage, all the way to the right, there's projects and studies. If you click on that, you'll see the map of Virginia. You can click on the western part of Virginia, or you click on the word Stanton, and that will bring you to the Stanton list of projects. You look for projects in the in-design category. You scroll to the bottom of that. You'll see Warren County Rockland Road, and all you need to do is click on that. That is the main project page, and then there's a link to the public involvement page. If you go to that, the public involvement page does have a full copy of the slide presentation that was presented today. And of course, this meeting is being recorded, and it will be also posted there after the meeting is concluded, and you'll be able to view that at any time you wish.
Michael, maybe this would be a good time to put up the slide about how to submit comments again. Slide number 20, please. Thank you. Here again are the ways that you can submit your comments so that they will be formally accepted as part of the transcript, the official transcript and, and public record. You can leave a voicemail, you can email me, you can mail them to VDOT, or complete the survey form. Be accepting comments through July 1st. I see a question there from Ms. Oz. Sandy, did you want to read it, or would you like me to?
You said that $15 million was coming from the Department of Transportation grant to the Port Authority. How is the remainder being funded?
Okay, this project is fully funded. It's in our six-year program, so that's where the rest of the money is coming from. And I should say that we're currently in fairly early stages of project development. I mean, we're certainly getting there, and we have made a lot of progress over the past few months. But when we submitted the initial estimate, we didn't necessarily have a handle on what it would take in order to build this project. I think we didn't necessarily know.
in order to build this project. I think we didn't necessarily know how much fill would need to be brought in for this project, and that can be quite expensive. So we've been working through our estimate and total project cost based upon the information that we know, and working to resolve the issues so that the unknowns become known. So the total project cost could change, but we think we've done a pretty good job of capturing everything at this point in time. And then moving forward, there's a chance that perhaps it won't cost as much, but we're, we're gonna keep our eye on it as we continue to work out some of the issues, especially with the geotechnical work. All right, I think we're gonna go ahead and do the presentation again at five o'clock, so in case anybody else joins us, or maybe if you missed it the first time around, we'll redo the presentation and the video starting at five o'clock.
And Ms. Oats, we thank you too. She says thank you, but it's, we thank everybody for joining us for this public hearing today, and please feel free to continue to join us as we repeat the presentation.
Okay, just a few more minutes, and we'll start the presentation over again, followed by the video. And again, if you have any questions or remarks, please feel free to use the chat box or call in. We will be holding the questions, remarks until after the presentation, so now's the time to get them in.
Hey Liz, this is Scott. I just wanted to put out a reminder that if anyone would like to ask questions but are not comfortable doing so in a public format, to feel free to contact Liz or any one of the design members, and we'll answer your questions that way if it's preferred.
Absolutely. Thank you, Scott. All right, so it's five o'clock, and we're gonna go ahead and get started on round two of the presentation. Thank you again for joining us for this virtual public hearing. I'm Liz Jordan, the VDOT project manager for round, this project, which is Route 658, Rockland Road, grade-separated project in Warren County. We are very excited about this project and are eager to share it with you. Here is the agenda for this public hearing. After explaining the purposes of it and a public comment process, I will introduce representatives of the VDOT project team. I will then provide you with an overview of the project, highlighting some of its key elements. Although a seemingly small project, it is big in concept and design, so we've put together a short video that should help you to visualize what we are proposing to do. At the conclusion of the video, we will open the floor for your questions and remarks. The public hearing is a key milestone in VDOT's project development process. Its purpose is to, one, inform the public of the project's status and present current design recommendations; two, describe the project so that the public can determine how they might be affected by it; three, provide the public with an opportunity to comment; and four, create an administrative record of public participation. In short, the public hearing provides the public, especially affected property owners, with an opportunity to view the current project design and provide meaningful feedback relative to it at a time in the project development when the design is still flexible. Given the unique circumstances of COVID-19, along with our commitment to protecting public health during this global pandemic, VDOT is conducting this design public hearing virtually to avoid in-person contact. This virtual public hearing provides the same information and opportunities as an in-person public hearing, including an overview of the project and its proposed design, cost, and schedule. You will also have access to our project team and be afforded ample time to ask questions and provide feedback. We are happy to address any concerns you might have and are eager to hear your thoughts about this project. Please note that these discussions will not be part of the official record. The ways in which you can formally submit your comments on the project are described in the next slide. Here are the ways in which you may formally submit your comments to VDOT. Please note that I will be repeating this information throughout the public hearing, so you don't need to rush to write it all down right now. To submit your comments, you may leave a voicemail on our dedicated line at 540-332-7848. Email me, Elizabeth Jordan, at Elizabeth dot Jordan, at VDOT dot Virginia dot gov, or you can mail them to my attention at VDOT 811 Commerce Road, Stanton, Virginia 24401. In all cases, please reference the subject, "Public Hearing, Rockland Road Bridge Comment." You may also use the survey form available on VDOT's public involvement page for this project. More details about that will be presented in the next slide. Please note that verbal and written comments received at this public hearing are not considered part of the official record. In order for your comments to be incorporated into the official record, you must call, email, or mail your comments to VDOT, or use the project survey form on the website. Importantly, comments must be received or postmarked within 10 days after the public hearing to be considered part of the official record. That means that all comments must be received or postmarked by Thursday, July 1st. This is a screenshot of VDOT's public involvement page for this project. This is, you'll find project information as well as this presentation and the video that we will be showing later. You will also find links to surveys, one through which you can provide official comments, and the other, a Title VI demographic survey. Both are entirely voluntary. If you would like to complete these surveys, just click the comments header in the blue box, and the page will scroll down to the bottom where the surveys can be found. Here are some representatives of VDOT's project team who are available to you this afternoon. Although I'm featuring only a handful of us in this slide, please know that there are numerous others attending this hearing virtually at the ready to address your questions, remarks, and concerns. Again, I'm Liz Jordan, serving in the capacity of project manager. My official title is environmental specialist, and I will also be addressing any questions you might have relative to the environmental work that was done in support of the project. Also in attendance, we have Scott Alexander, Assistant Location and Design Engineer here in the Stanton District; Jason Henry is the design team lead and roadway engineer from VDOT Central Office; we're also joined by Shannon Kerrigan, Hydraulics Engineer, VDOT Central Office; Amde Osfaw, Bridge Engineer, Stanton District; and finally, Brentley Bowles, VDOT's Regional Representative for Right-of-Way. He has extensive knowledge of our processes and procedures, and is available, like the rest of our team, to answer any questions you might have. If you are joining us via the internet, you are welcome to type your questions or remarks directly into the participants' box on the right-hand side of your screen. If prompted, please direct your questions or remarks to all co-hosts. If you are joining us by phone, then please dial star three to raise your hand. You will be put into the Q and A queue and muted until it is your time to speak. Sandy Myers, Communications Director for the Stanton District, will read your question or remarks, and I will respond accordingly, directing to the appropriate VDOT team member as necessary. If we are unable to fully address your concerns this afternoon, then please submit them to us using the phone line, email, or online survey form. You will be able to enter your questions into the participants' box after the presentation of the video. So now on to the project overview. VDOT proposes to construct a grade-separated crossing on Route 658, which is Rockland Road in Warren County, near Front Royal and the Virginia Inland Port. The project is located along Route 658, near its intersection with Route 705, which is Fishnet Boulevard. When complete, this bridge will allow the traveling public to pass over the Norfolk Southern Railway unimpeded. This project is a high priority for Warren County and is funded in part by a build grant awarded to the Virginia Port Authority by the United States Department of Transportation. Before we move on to the next slides, I want to take a moment just to point out some things to help you orient yourself. So here, you're looking at the project area, the general project area. This is Route 658, Rockland Road through here. These are the railroad tracks, and the bridge will be going right there. Here is Fishnet Boulevard, Route 705. Here is the entrance to Rockland Recreational Park and the park itself there. This is the driveway to the Virginia Hills Church, and the church is back over here. We've got Kelly Drive right here. These are the western limits of the project, and over here, we've got the eastern limits of the project. Here is an aerial overview of the proposed plans. The grade separation would consist of a bridge 220 feet long and 42 feet wide, with a minimum vertical clearance of 23 feet. This bridge would be tall enough for double-stacked freight containers to pass underneath, allowing traffic to flow freely while trains pass, pass through the corridor or unload at the Virginia Inland Port and other local businesses. In the existing condition, vehicles are stopped here multiple times per day for indefinite periods of time. In 2019, Route 658 had an average daily traffic count of 2,200 vehicles per day. And by the design year of 2046, the estimated average daily traffic volume would be 5,990 vehicles per day. By providing a grade-separated crossing over the railroad tracks, the project would eliminate the wait time for these vehicles, thereby greatly improving the reliability of this route. Since the bridge would be long enough to span three tracks, the project could also accommodate future rail needs. In addition to the construction of the bridge, improvements are planned for the roadway approaches on Route 658, as well as Route 705. These are described in more detail in the following slides. But before we move on, I'd like to point out the difference between the existing and proposed conditions. Here, we've got existing Route seven, I'm sorry, Route 658, which is Rockland Road. This is the existing Fishnet right through here. Here are the railroad tracks, and again, the bridge is gonna be in this vicinity, but here, because this is the, the proposed alignment of, of Rockland Road. Here is the existing driveway to the Virginia Hills Church. This is the proposed new entrance and driveway, and this is the entrance to Rockland Recreational Park and the relocated Fishnet Boulevard. We've also got the Allegheny Service Power Road, which is coming over this way. Currently, it is located off of Route 658, and this is an existing gravel parking lot within the park, and it's gonna be relocated over here. So just to show you existing conditions and the plans imposed on top of them, which would be the proposed conditions. This detail shows key project elements along Route 658. As shown here, Route 658 would be shifted slightly north of its existing alignment to accommodate the bridge and improve site distance. The proposed bridge would be 220 feet long and 42 feet wide, spanning two existing Norfolk Southern Railroad tracks, leaving room for a future third track. The typical section would consist of two 12-foot lanes and two eight-foot paved shoulders. It would be a three-span structure with one abutment on either side of the Norfolk Southern right-of-way, and with two solid wall piers constructed on rock, supported by steel piles located within it. The superstructure would be made of continuous steel plate girders with a composite reinforced concrete deck. It would be jointless to enhance its service life with minimal future maintenance costs. The project also includes a right-turn lane into the Rockland Recreational Park. The entrances to Rockland Recreational Park and the Virginia Hills Church would be relocated to the east of their current locations. An improved entrance and access road would be provided to the natural gas facility, and two water quality basins would be, I'm sorry, water quantity basins would be constructed for the project. This detail shows key project elements in the vicinity of Route 705. As shown here, the alignment of Route 705 and the entrance to Rockland Recreational Park would be shifted to the east away from the railroad tracks to accommodate a right-turn lane into the park. Here, Route 705 would be built up substantially to accommodate the grade change required by the bridge on Route 658. At its intersection with Route 658, this could be as much as 16 feet of fill, be in this vicinity here. The Allegheny Power Service Road would be realigned with its entrance off of relocated Route 705, rather than Route 658, down here. The entrance to the Virginia Hills Church would be relocated to the east and its driveway realigned, right here. The existing gravel parking lot in Rockland Recreational Park, to be impacted by the relocated Route 705, would be replaced in kind. And all affected private entrances would be replaced in kind. Here are the typical sections for Route 658, Route 705, the church entrance, and the Allegheny Power Service Road. The typical section for Route 658 would consist of two 12-foot lanes with an eight-foot shoulder on either side of the road, four feet of which is paved. There would be guardrail. The typical section for Route 705 would consist of two 12-foot lanes with an eight-foot shoulder on either side of the road, of which four feet would be paved and four feet would be grass. The typical section for the church entrance would consist of a single eight-foot lane with a two-foot shoulder and ditch on either side. Typical section for the Allegheny Power Service Road would consist of two 12-foot lanes with a two-foot grass shoulder on either side. It is important to note that the eight-foot paved shoulder on the bridge and the four-foot paved shoulder on Route 658 could accommodate bikes and pedestrians in this rural context. shoulder on Route 658 could accommodate bikes and pedestrians in this rural context. Due to its scope and complicated phasing, the project requires a detour. During Phase 1 of construction, vehicles would be directed to the west of Route 705 via Detour A, and during Phase 3 of construction, to the east of Route 705 via Detour B. Through residential, church, and park traffic would utilize either detours, and in some cases both, during Phase 2 of construction. The detour routes are shown here and will be explained more fully in the video. Rockland Recreational Park would remain open for the duration of construction, and all affected owners, including local churches, would retain access to their properties at all times. There would be approximately 5 acres of fee simple right-of-way, approximately 5,290 square feet of permanent easement, and approximately 2 acres of temporary construction easement required for this project. Please note that additional easements may be needed for drainage and utilities, so these numbers may change as we progress through project development. There would be no residential, commercial, business, or nonprofit displacements associated with this project, and all right-of-way acquisitions would be completed by VDOT in accordance with the Uniform Act and federal and state laws. VDOT policies and procedures would be followed for all appraisals and negotiations. Each affected property would be subject to evaluation to determine its fair market value, and during negotiations, the landowner would receive a copy of the acquisition valuation, a title examination, and a modified offer in writing, along with all pertinent construction plan sheets. The VDOT negotiator would communicate with the property owner to ensure all questions, comments, and concerns are addressed during this process. In accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act, a categorical exclusion was prepared for this project on the behalf of the Federal Highway Administration. The environmental work conducted in support of the NEPA document included, but was not limited to cultural resources, natural resources, hazardous materials, environmental justice, and noise. Archaeological and architectural surveys were conducted within the project study area. No archaeological sites were identified, and none of the seven architectural resources located in the area of potential effects were eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. On March 4, 2020, the Virginia Department of Historic Resources determined that the proposed project would have no effect on historic properties. In order to construct the project as proposed, Fishnet Boulevard would be relocated, requiring the use of 1.522 acres of the 219-acre Rockland Recreational Park. On July 2, 2020, after the official jurisdiction over the park concurred, federal highways made a de minimis impact finding for the use. Because the relocation of Fishnet Boulevard would significantly alter the horizontal alignment and halve the distance to noise-sensitive land uses, a screening-level noise analysis was conducted. It was concluded that noise impacts are not predicted in the project corridor and that noise mitigation is not warranted. Extensive coordination was done with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the Department of Wildlife Resources for compliance with Section 7 of the Endangered Species Act and to ensure that the project would not adversely affect the Madison Cave Isopod, a listed federally threatened species which lives in the sinkholes in the project vicinity. VDOT has designed the project to avoid impacts to the species and its habitat. No streams or wetlands are present in the project area, and as such, no federal water quality permits would be required to construct this project. This project is fully funded for the preliminary engineering, right-of-way, and construction phases. The total project cost estimate is approximately $27.4 million. This includes $1,943,393 for preliminary engineering, $3,491,606 for right-of-way and utilities, and $21,939,821 for construction. Approximately $15 million of funding would be provided by the Virginia Port Authority, which was awarded a build grant for this project by the United States Department of Transportation. This grant is administered through the National Maritime Administration. After the public hearing, and once all comments are considered and addressed, the proposed design would be approved and the right-of-phase and detailed design efforts would begin. We are looking to advertise this project for construction in the summer of 2023. The planned construction start date is December 30, 2023, and is expected to be completed in the spring of 2025. Here again are the ways in which you can submit your comments on the project. You may leave a voicemail, email them to me, mail them to VDOT, or use the survey form on the VDOT project website. Again, in all cases, please reference the subject Public Hearing Rockland Road Bridge Comment. Please remember that you must call, email, or mail your comments to VDOT, or use the project survey form on the website in order for them to be incorporated into the official record. All comments must be received or postmarked by Thursday, July 1st. Well, that concludes this presentation, second time around. We're going to show the video now, and we'll open the floor to questions and remarks upon its conclusion. Thank you in advance for your participation.
Every day, thousands of vehicles and train cars cross paths here on Route 658, Rockland Road in Warren County, just south of the Virginia Inland Port near Front Royal. Rockland Road drivers experience frequent and sometimes lengthy delays at the crossing as trains travel the busy Norfolk Southern Railway or perform loading and unloading operations at the inland port. The Virginia Department of Transportation plans to construct a grade-separated crossing, a bridge carrying Rockland Road traffic over the rail line. The project would improve reliability and traffic flow on Rockland Road, which already carries 2,200 vehicles a day, and is projected to reach nearly 6,000 by the design year 2046. Freight rail traffic is also expected to increase. The proposed bridge would be long enough to span the two existing tracks and accommodate a third one in the future. The proposed structure, shown in these conceptual designs, would be 220 feet long and 42 feet wide. The bridge would have a minimum vertical clearance of 23 feet to allow double-stacked freight containers to pass underneath. Norfolk Southern traffic and inland port operations would no longer conflict with vehicle traffic. The project includes a realignment of Rockland Road to enhance site distance, and would also make improvements to Fishnet Boulevard, Route 705. Fishnet and the entrance to Rockland Park would be shifted to the east, away from the railroad tracks, allowing construction of a right-turn lane into the park. The new park entrance would be aligned with the new entrance road for Virginia Hills Church. Other features of the project include a new access road to the natural gas facility and a realigned service road for Allegheny Power. Rockland Road, including the bridge over the railway, would have paved shoulders wide enough to accommodate bikes and pedestrians. This project is designed to preserve sinkhole areas, the habitat of Madison Cave Isopod Protected Species. Construction is scheduled to start in December 2023 and last 16 months. Rockland Road would be closed for the duration. Route 340-522 Winchester Road and Route 661 Fairground Road would serve as detour routes. Rockland Park would remain open to the public during construction. The total cost of the project is estimated at $27 million. It is partly funded by a build grant awarded to the Virginia Port Authority by the United States Department of Transportation. If you have any questions about the proposed Rockland Road improvements, please contact VDOT's Edinburgh Residency Office at 540-984-5600.
Great, Michael, thank you so much for that. And thank you to anyone who's joining us. We have opened the lines for questions or remarks, so please feel free.
And again, we ask that you type your question into the Q&amp;A box on the webpage, and then we will answer it. And again, follow-up questions are very welcome. We also want to remind everybody that this public hearing is being recorded, and it will be posted for the public to see. You will be able to access that through the Public Involvement page as well as the project page for Rockland Road. To get there, you go to virginia dot org, and then you click on Projects and Studies. That is in the top orange navigation bar on the website. You click on Stanton once you get to the page with the map of Virginia. And then you'll be brought to the page with a list of all the projects that are currently being considered or underway within the Stanton District. Under In Design, go to the bottom, and you'll see Warren County, Rockland Road. And if you click on that, you'll be brought to the project page. There's also a link on the project page to the virtual public involvement. And if you click on that, that will bring you to the virtual public involvement page. On that page is where the survey is for this project. You can access the video, you can access this presentation, and you can provide your comments for this public hearing.
Thank you for that, Sandy. I didn't know if there's anything anybody else wanted to offer as information? Design team, anything else we need to go over? This is one of the drawbacks of a virtual public hearing. If we were standing in person, then we could be looking at displays and things like that, and it's easier to have some conversations, but the downtime's a little quiet.
Liz, perhaps if we go over the questions that were already presented to us earlier this afternoon and review those answers, that might be helpful. Would that be all right?
Yes, Sandy, that's great.
Okay. So again, starting from the top, the first question we received is, can you tell us how much of the project is grant-funded? And that individual said they currently did not have a microphone on their computer, so they couldn't orally ask that.
Sure. About $15 million is funded by a build grant that was awarded to the Virginia Port Authority by the United States Department of Transportation. That grant is actually administered through the National Maritime Administration. So it's about $15 million is grant-funded.
Okay, and then the next question was, I saw a stormwater basin on the plans. Any chance of making that into a conservation project, like a large rain garden with native shrubs or wildflowers and/or other environmentally friendly design elements?
Since Shannon did such a great job of answering it last time, I'll turn it back over to Shannon.
It took me a minute to get my neat. But yeah, we do have a, one of the basins on the project is both water quantity and water quality, and we are looking at a design that features some of the same features that a rainwater garden, I guess, would accommodate. But we also limited on price, and a rainwater garden, those are often for really small drainage areas, so it can't be exactly that in the same technical sense of the term, but we are looking at those types of alternatives for those water quantity basins.
Thank you, Shannon.
Okay, the next question was, since the new proposed road is a lot wider than the existing road, how will the new road intersect with the old road?
Jason, did you want to take this one?
Sure. The proposed road is going to tie into the existing road. The existing road's a little over 11 foot wide. We're going to build our road at 12 foot, and we're going to transition it to 12 feet. And then we're going to also have 4-foot paved shoulders and 4-foot graded. And we are going to tie that back into the existing as we go further down along Rockland Road.
Hey, Liz, can you? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to read the next question, Scott. Please, go ahead.
I was going to say, can you bring up the public hearing display? And it may be a little more obvious where the transition takes place.
Sure. Michael, could you pull up Slide 9, please?
Looks a little bit blurry, but if we were able to zoom in a little bit, you can see where the new Fishnet Boulevard intersection is and Fishnet Road. And you can see just to the right of that, you can see where the road tapers down to the existing width. So hopefully that clarifies a little bit where that transition takes place.
Actually, Slide 11 might be better to view that. It's a little bit closer in.
Yeah, there we go. So Jason correctly, if I'm wrong, so the 12-foot lanes, I misspoke earlier, it's 12-foot lanes tying in from the west, tying into the existing, continuing over the bridge with a paved shoulder. And then, once we get past the relocated intersection, we will transition down to the existing pavement width.
That is correct, Scott.
Then the follow-up question to this was, you are saying the existing roads' lanes are 12-foot wide now? And that was a question?
Yeah, and that's correct. West of the tracks is where it's 12 feet, and then, as you can see, to the east, the road narrows down quite a bit, and so it'd be east of the relocated intersection that we would transition to the existing width.
Okay, and the next comment is, it says, it seems like the new road will be a big change, even though you say it is only 1 foot difference on each side, but thanks for the answer.
And I think that's a very astute observation. It is going to look very different out there, not necessarily with the width of the roadways, but just with the bridge over the railroad tracks there and relocated intersections. So it's going to look different on the landscape, which is why we did that video and showed the modeling so that people would have a better understanding of what these plans would look like in, you know, additional dimensions on the ground. So appreciate the comment or the remark.
Okay, and the next question we had received is, will the results of the survey be made public?
Last time we answered this, Scott did a great job just sort of explaining the public comment process. So we will be taking all of the comments that we receive officially through the phone line, email, the survey, or by mailing them to me, and we will consolidate them, and we will work to address them. And then, and that will change our design in some ways. We'll see how we can accommodate what needs to be addressed and make a better project and the best project that we can for this area, and given our constraints. and the best project that we can for this, this area and given our constraints. And then that is available, it's submitted as part of the design approval process, but it will be public record.
And then the follow-up question was, will the survey responses and the public comments be made public? And just to clarify, and I think Liz, you did an excellent job of this earlier. Any kind of remarks or comments that are being written here in the Q and A box are not considered the public comments. That's just part of the dialogue that we're having here during this public hearing. The actual public comments are going to be received through the survey or the phone line or any of the methods that Liz presented in her slide presentation.
Yeah, and if I can just expand on that just a little bit, a lot of times we get comments either they don't have full return addresses or emails. Anything we do is public record. And if, if anyone would like a copy of the comments or any, anything we've discussed to contact Liz, and she'll make sure you get what you're looking for.
Absolutely, thank you, Scott.
The electronic survey is, again, is available on the public involvement page associated with the project page on the VDOT website. You can do your answers electronically there. Or we also have a static comment sheet that you can download and mail back to VDOT if you so choose. And again, we also have the email option and the phone line option. So the next question was, you said that 15 million was coming from the Department of Transportation grant to the Port Authority. How is the remainder being funded?
Okay, and this project is fully funded for all of its phases and it's in a VDOT six-year improvement program. So it's all fully funded.
And those are the end of the questions that we, we received earlier this afternoon. I do not see any new questions or remarks at this time.
Here again on the screen are the ways that you can formally submit your comments to VDOT. You can leave us a voicemail, 540-332-7848. You can email me, the project manager, elizabeth.jordan@vdotvirginia.gov. Mail them to us at vdot811commerceroadstanford, Virginia 24401, to my attention. And you can also access the project survey, which is available on the VDOT website. Sandy, would you mind just going over the project page one more time for folks?
Sure, so the project page is located on the VDOT website. That's virginia dot org. And once you get to that website, look at the orange bar at the top of the page. And on the far right, it will say projects and studies. When you click on that, you'll be brought to a page. It actually shows a small map of Virginia. And you could click on the western part of the map if you wish. That's the Stanton district, or you can click on the word Stanton under the choices for districts. Once you get to that page, the Stanton project page, you're going to see a large list of projects that are either ongoing or upcoming. And if you look in the in-design section of that page and go to the bottom, you'll see Warren County and Rockland Road. And if you just click on that link, that will bring you to the actual project page. And there we have all the basic project information. Also, on the project page, we do have a link to the virtual public involvement. And if you click on that link, it will bring you to the public involvement page. There we have the actual presentation that you just saw. We have a link to the video. And we also have the surveys that we mentioned previously. You can certainly fill out the surveys there on the project page. Or again, we have static documents such as a comment sheet, the project brochure. And you can certainly respond to your comments, have your comments sent in, in that fashion. We also have the phone number listed and again, the email that you can send your comments to, to Dr. Jordan.
Great Sandy, thank you so much. So I think there are a couple of folks that are ready to watch the video again. So maybe we go ahead and show that.
Every day, thousands of vehicles and train cars cross paths here on Route 658, Rockland Road in Warren County, just south of the Virginia inland port near Front Royal. Rockland Road drivers experience frequent and sometimes lengthy delays at the crossing as trains travel the busy Norfolk Southern Railway or perform loading and unloading operations at the inland port. The Virginia Department of Transportation plans to construct a grade separated crossing, a bridge carrying Rockland Road traffic over the rail line. The project would improve reliability and traffic flow on Rockland Road, which already carries 2,200 vehicles a day and is projected to reach nearly 6,000 by the design year 2046. Freight rail traffic is also expected to increase. The proposed bridge would be long enough to span the two existing tracks and accommodate a third one in the future. The proposed structure shown in these conceptual designs would be 220 feet long and 42 feet wide. The bridge would have a minimum vertical clearance of 23 feet to allow double stacked freight containers to pass underneath. Norfolk Southern traffic and inland port operations would no longer conflict with vehicle traffic. The project includes a realignment of Rockland Road to enhance site distance and would also make improvements to Fishnet Boulevard, Route 705. Fishnet and the entrance to Rockland Park would be shifted to the east, away from the railroad tracks, allowing construction of a right turn lane into the park. The new parked entrance would be aligned with the new entrance road for Virginia Hills Church. Other features of the project include a new access road to the natural gas facility and a realigned service road for Allegheny Power. Rockland Road, including the bridge over the railway, would have paved shoulders wide enough to accommodate bikes and pedestrians. This project is designed to preserve sinkhole areas, the habitat of Madison Cave Isopod Protected Species. Construction is scheduled to start in December 2023 and last 16 months. Rockland Road would be closed for the duration. Route 340-522 Winchester Road and Route 661 Fairground Road would serve as detour routes. Rockland Park would remain open to the public during construction. The total cost of the project is estimated at $27 million. It is partly funded by a build grant awarded to the Virginia Port Authority by the United States Department of Transportation. If you have any questions about the proposed Rockland Road improvements, please contact VDOT's Edinburgh residency office at 540-984-5600.
Great, thank you. And there again is the way to participate in this public hearing. So feel free to raise your hand or enter your questions or remarks. We're all still here. It looks like we still have just a little less than 20 minutes left. We're going to be wrapping everything up around six o'clock. Again, if you have any comments that you want to be added to the official record, you know, or looking for good feedback too. If you're in support of the project, we'd be very happy to receive that. Oftentimes we hear what people don't like about a project, but it does help us to make a better project if we're aware of what things you do like as well. So again, please feel free to submit your comments to us by email, the phone line, the survey, or mailing them to me so that we have a good assessment as to how you feel about this project.
Liz, we probably have enough time to go for the Q and A box one more time, just in case somebody is joining us late, if that would be okay?
Sure, that works for me. Let's go ahead.
And again, anybody who's listening, these questions were submitted earlier this afternoon as part of this public hearing, but we're going to review them in case anybody has further comments or questions or remarks on this topic, or if you have other questions or remarks concerning the public hearing. So the first question we got is, can you tell, can you tell us how much of the project is grant funded? And again, this individual currently did not have a microphone to use with their computer.
Sure, and this project, which is fully funded, about $15 million of it is provided by a grant that was awarded to the Virginia Port Authority by the United States Department of Transportation. And that grant is actually administered through the National Maritime Administration, about $15 million.
Okay. Um, the next question is, I saw a stormwater basin on the plans. Any change of making that into a conservation project, like a large rain garden with native shrubs, wildflowers, and/or other environmentally friendly design elements?
Yeah, and my response earlier was that we have the two basins on the project. Both are functioning as holding back and slowing down water for water quantity treatment. And one of them is also proposed to be a water quality treatment feature. And we're aiming for that to be a bio-retention type basin. The technical term rain garden. With flow going through them, but bio-retention would have similar types of plantings and water quality incorporation into the ground. So we are looking at those options and trying to fit them in within our construction budget on the project.
Okay, the next question is, since the new proposed road is a lot wider than the existing road, how will the new road intersect with the old road?
It would be helpful. Sure, no problem. It would be helpful if we went over to the slide overview.
Be slide nine, please.
When you're looking at this on the west side, we're tying into the existing roadway, which is about 12 foot wide. And our roadway itself is also 12 foot wide. We're also going to provide four foot paved shoulders, which will provide for bicycle accommodation. And as we go up over the railroad tracks, we pass over the bridge, coming back down towards relocated Fishnet, and then we will transition the roadway width back into existing.
Great, Jason, thank you.
And then there was a follow-up question is, you were saying the existing roads lanes are 12 foot wide now? That was a question.
Looking at, at the, the lane widths as they are now, the lane widths towards Kelly Drive are towards, are about 12 foot wide. And as we get off the bridge, pass relocated Fishnet, they actually go down to about nine foot wide. And our roadway will actually transition and tie into those, those existing edges of pavement.
And then the follow-up remark is, it seems like the new road will be a big change, even though you say it's only one foot different on each side. But thanks for the answer. And then again, returning to our questions, the next question is, will the survey, will the results of the survey be made public?
Yes, they will be. To, to explain the public comment process, we will be. To explain the public comment process, we will be accepting the public comments through the phone line and the email and by mail and the online survey. And we'll consolidate all of those and they become part of the public record. And they can be made available to the public. In addition, if you would like to have a copy of that, then you can contact me. But the point of doing the public hearing is to get feedback from the public about the project and see how that might inform our design moving forward. It's also part of our design approval process. So it's public, it's a public transcript. So yes, the survey will be made public. We can make those results available to whoever would like to have them.
And then the clarifying question was, "Will the survey responses and the public comments be made public?"
Yes, it's part of the public record. So if somebody would like that, then they can certainly reach out to me and contact me, and we can make that happen.
Okay, and then the next question is, "You said that 15 million was coming from the Department of Transportation grant to the Port Authority. How is the remaining being funded?"
And this project is fully funded for all of its phases in VDOT's six-year improvement program. So that's where the rest of the funding is.
And that is the last of our questions. But again, we are still all here. We can certainly entertain more questions and do our best to answer any comments or remarks that anybody would wish to share. And again, we'll share one more time how to access the opportunity to comment on this public hearing. Again, you can go to virginia dot org. And on the VDOT website, you will see an orange bar at the top of the page. Over to the far right, you'll see Projects and Studies. And if you click on that, you'll be brought to a page. It actually has a small map of Virginia. Just click on the western part of the state or you click on Stanton. That will bring you to the Stanton Project Page list. And in that page, you will look under the In Design section. Scroll to the bottom and you'll see Warren County Rockland Road. If you click on that link, it will bring you to the project page. And in there, there will be all the information related to this project. But there's also a link to the public involvement page. And when you click on that link, you'll be brought to the page that has this presentation on there. It also has a link to the video on there and it has the electronic survey. So if you wish to provide comments electronically, we do have that option on the public involvement page. The public involvement page also has a static comment sheet, which you can fill out and mail back to VDOT. Or you can also call us and on the phone number listed there or email us as well. So there are a variety of ways that your input can be incorporated into the official record of this project.
Thank you, Sandy. Very much appreciate that. And it looks like we just have a few more minutes. So if anybody does have any questions or remarks, now's the time to do it. Just one more time, you're looking at the slide that shows you how to submit your comments for this project. You can leave a voicemail, (540) 332-7848. You can email me, elizabeth.jordan@vdot.virginia.gov. You can mail them to VDOT, that would be Virginia Department of Transportation, 811 Commerce Road, Stanton, Virginia 24401, to my attention. And you can also complete the survey, which is available on the VDOT website. And importantly, comments will be accepted through Thursday, July 1st. And that's in order for them to be incorporated into the official transcript and the official public record.
And again, as we just have a couple more minutes before we sign off, we do have the Q and A box open. And if anybody would like to type in a question or a remark, we would be more than happy to take a look at that right now.
All right, so we're getting right close to 6 o'clock. So I just thought I would thank everybody for attending. All the folks who are joined us via the internet or the phone, also the VDOT project team. I definitely appreciate all of your efforts and being here for the support. If someone's out there and they have, again, a question, remark, comment that they didn't want to raise at this public hearing, then please do feel free to reach out to me. And I'd be happy to discuss anything you might want to discuss. So thank you again for your participation. We're really excited about this project and we're looking forward to a successful completion of it. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, VDOT. And thank you to the public. Have a great evening.